Teleconferencing into the meeting. The meeting will be conducted via a Zoom webinar. To maximize public safety while maintaining transparency and public access, members of the public can observe the meeting from home. Below is information on how the public may observe and participate in the meeting. And it's described in the minutes that are found online on how to access the meeting. To participate in the meeting by providing public comment during the meeting, live verbal public comments may be made by members of the public joining the meeting via Zoom. Zoom access information is provided above. Use the raise hand feature during the public comment period for the agenda. For those of you who aren't aware, you can also press nine to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Okay? The board clerk will call upon you to speak by name, provided or by the last four digits of the phone number for dial-in for attendees. Please clearly state your full name for the record and the start of your public comment. Okay, so with that, we're going to begin with the roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Reza McKelley?
Here.
Ms. Reza Flores?
Present.
Ms. Reza Ziegemeyer?
Here.
Ms. Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Ms. Supervisor Conant?
Ms. Supervisor Conant, are you present?
It appears it looks like he's logged off, Chairman.
Okay, if we could take a moment, a technical break. If I can have IT, please, see if we can bring Supervisor Conant back into the meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could advise me when Supervisor Conant's back on, I appreciate it.
He's having reception issues. Ms. Supervisor Conant is currently having some reception issues. And he is attempting to reconnect.
Okay, we'll stand by for a little bit. Supervisor Conant, can you hear me okay? You're on mute now, but I'm just checking to see if you can hear me okay.
Yes, I am on mute.
You're good, okay. All right, welcome back. All right, we'll continue with the meeting. We've just completed roll call. Can you answer that you're present Supervisor Conant? Even though we see...
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes the roll call. And we'll move on to public comment. I have a statement to read for public comment before we do begin the public comment. And this is a statement from the Board of Supervisors, and we'd like to read it right now before public comment. Okay? "The Sutter County Board of Supervisors believes that the medical treatment and preventative measures are an individual choice. We believe it is our responsibility to educate the public based on facts. We also believe that it is not our responsibility," again, repeat, "not our responsibility, "to create mandates that force people to accept vaccinations against their will. However, based on the facts we have seen, we do encourage citizens of Sutter County to get vaccinated to help lower the negative effects of this serious, never-before-experienced health crisis. Fact number one: COVID-19 is a respiratory virus that spreads and can and has caused serious illness and death for Sutter County residents. Fact: COVID-19 is a virus that will never fully go away, and there is no cure. Fact: Patients with COVID-19 have had mild to severe respiratory illness with typical symptoms of fever, cough, and shortness of breath. Fact: Vaccines are created to help control the spread of the virus. Fact: Vaccines that have been developed can dramatically lessen the severity of COVID-19. Fact: Unvaccinated people are getting the Delta variant, COVID-19, and are being hospitalized and dying of this variant at a much higher rate than those who are vaccinated. Fact: The Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine was approved by the FDA on August 23, 2021. Fact: The primary ICU utilized by Sutter County residents, Adventist Health and Write-Out, is at capacity. Fact: The majority of people from Sutter County currently in the ICU are between the ages of 40 and 70, with most in their 40s and 50s. Fact: Available vaccines were developed using mRNA technology that has been in development for close to 20 years. Fact: Before COVID-19 vaccines were developed, mRNA vaccines had been tested in Phase I and Phase II clinical trials in humans for flu, HIV, rabies, and Zika virus. Fact: Vaccine side effects are still being studied, and it is possible that there could be side effects discovered in the future. Serious side effect, however, serious side effects that could cause a long-term health problem are extremely unlikely following a vaccination, including COVID-19 vaccination. Fact: The CDC continually updates its website and provides information on COVID-19 vaccine side effects and its links to vaccine adverse reporting systems that include incidents of illness and death related to the vaccines. Fact: On August 5, 2021, the California State Public Health Officer and Director, Thomas Aragon, M.D., Ph.D., ordered that healthcare workers be fully vaccinated, two doses of Moderna, Pfizer, or one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson for COVID-19 by September 30, 2021. Fact: Healthcare workers cover a large number of positions in various facilities as described in the state order. Fact: Per the order, workers may be exempt from the vaccination requirements only upon providing the operator of the facility a declination form signed by the individual stating either one of the following: One, the worker is declining vaccination based on religious beliefs; or two, the worker is excused from receiving any COVID-19 vaccine due to qualifying medical reasons verified by a licensed medical professional. Fact: Exempt workers are required by the state to participate in weekly or twice-weekly testing for COVID-19 and wear a surgical mask or higher-level respirator while they work in a medical facility. Fact: Sutter County employs people that meet the state's definition of healthcare worker. Fact: Workers that are not exempt and not vaccinated will be ineligible to work after September 30, 2021, due to the state's order. Fact: Sutter County is in the meet-and-confer process as legally required with employee bargaining units over the impacts of the state's order. Fact: Sutter County's intention is to work diligently within the law to avoid any employee displacement regarding vaccination compliance. Sutter County will update employees as more information becomes available. This was prepared under a motto of ours right now. What we're taking the stance of the Sutter County Board of Supervisors is our role to educate, not mandate. It's our role, again, to educate the public both on the negative and positive effects of being vaccinated and the rules that are set by the state that come out. With that said, you can see from the statement that the Board of Supervisors, excuse me, the Board of Supervisors do not support mandates or mandated passports or mandated vaccinations. This is a choice that we believe that you should make as an individual. And I want to ask the staff, and I want to bring this up for discussion as we're allowed to do right now, want to talk about setting a resolution where we can say in this county that we will not have, we will not require passports, vaccination passports. And I'd just like to open that up to discussion and at the same time, direct staff to move forward with what we come out from this discussion. Do any supervisors want to make a comment? Supervisor Ziegemeyer? We lost you on video, but go ahead.
All right, I'm here. Yeah, Dan, I completely agree with you on the whole mandate of vaccine and the whole mandate of the vaccine passport. And I would make a motion to direct staff to put together a resolution and to have a special meeting as soon as possible to have that read and signed.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Conant, Supervisor Conant, just a point of order. If you just raise your hand, I can call you. That way, we don't talk over each other.
I was going to make the motion.
Okay, we're not voting on it yet. We're just going to be directing staff, and they'll bring something back for us by the next meeting because this was not agendized. However, we're allowed to do this under public comment. Supervisor McKelley, did you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think it sounds like we all agree on this issue. And that I'm certainly not an anti-vaxxer. But I think, I mean, I'd love to encourage people to get vaccinated just for their own safety. However, it's certainly not the government's role to be telling people what they should or shouldn't do, you know, with their bodies. And if people are opposed to it that strongly, then they shouldn't have to get it. And we certainly shouldn't be forcing them to do so. And so I'm very much against a mandate. Again, not anti-vaxxer, but certainly against a mandate. So, thank you.
All right, thank you Supervisor McKelley. Supervisor Conant, you have your raised hand raised?
Yes. So, through the chair, I couldn't agree more. We probably need to pull Supervisor Ziegemeyer's motion then. He made a motion to, and, but we need to wait on that. Anyway, but I am pro-vaccines. I think people need to make this decision on their own. Individual freedoms are number one in this country, and we need to make sure we preserve those rights and freedoms. And everybody needs to make that choice on their own, in their own decision, in their own way for all the healthcare needs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Supervisor Conant, Supervisor Baines, did you have any comments?
I concur with the rest of the board. And I look forward to seeing that resolution come sooner than later.
Okay, great. CEO Steve Smith, we'd like to ask you to really take a look at that resolution here in the next few days. And if you could call a special meeting, we'd like to have that as well so that the board can vote on this resolution, which we feel is really critical and timely right now. Okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, any further comments from the Board of Supervisors at this moment before I open up public comment?
Nope, I just want to concur with what you said as soon as possible, Steve, so we can get that signed in the books. Thank you.
All right, thank you Supervisor Ziegemeyer. And with that, we go to public comment. This is where members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Okay, just for point of order for everyone who wants to speak today, we welcome you to do so. What's going to happen is the clerk will call your name or the last four digits of your cell number. If we don't have your name, or, you know, there'll be some way to ID you. And then you'll be allowed three minutes of speaking time. If the time goes too long, we may have to lower the number of minutes per speaker. But let's see how it goes. And we look forward to hearing everyone speak on this matter. And we can go ahead and start. So, Madam Clerk, if you want to call up the first speaker, we'll go ahead.
Well, thank you. The first speaker will be DJ Christ, and then the next speaker will be Courtney Allen.
Okay, great, thank you. Hello, DJ. Go ahead and start.
DJ Christ will see a prompt on their device to unmute themselves, and at that point, they continue with their...
Okay. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, we can hear you. Great, DJ.
Okay, all right. Hey, right off the bat, I want to say thank you to you guys for the way you are addressing this, your comments from the beginning here. That's awesome. We thank you very much for your work, for your comments, and for standing up for the right of the people to choose. That is important. You know, without that right to choose, we don't really have liberty. We don't have a free country. And so I want to say a big thank you to you guys. That would be a huge boost to our community to get that done. There are a lot of people, 30% to 40% in my estimate, people in this county who do not want to take this vaccine. Either they have alternate treatments or they feel they are immune from previous infection. They don't feel like the vaccine is a necessary risk for them. And they don't want to lose their jobs. They don't want to leave the area. And the economic impact of that on this area could be devastating if you lose 30% to 40% of your population. So, I really want to just applaud you guys. Say thank you very much for taking the initiative here. I look forward to the resolution and seeing what comes out of that. So, God bless you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, DJ. Appreciate your comments. And next up, Courtney, is it Courtney Ortega?
Our next speaker is Courtney Allen, followed by Greg Thompson.
Okay. Hello, Courtney.
Hi, Board. Sorry about that. I haven't changed my name on all of my accounts.
That's fine. We know you.
All right, good. Well, I wanted to reiterate Mr. Chris's comments. I do really appreciate you guys putting together that statement and making your comments on this case. That has been really dear to a lot of people in the public. I appreciate your thoughtfulness in that. And I appreciate you guys coming forward and publicly stating what we know you and the majority of our community believes in. And that's personal choice, that's liberty. And that's the right to do with our own body what we see fit, regardless of what somebody else thinks. So, I do really appreciate you guys doing that. And I really look forward to seeing that resolution on the next agenda. I know, we all do. I'm outside your guys' chambers right now with a group of about 70 people who came for the meeting. A lot of people didn't know that the meeting was changed to Zoom last minute. So, we're all here, and we're kind of doing our public comment together. So, it is great for us to hear that, that you guys are looking into that. And we will all definitely be at the next meeting expecting to see that and see you guys vote on that victory, you know? you guys vote on that victory, you know? As you guys are aware, something like a vaccine passport in the commerce system in a place of public accommodation like movie theaters, gym, that's something that we can't come back from. That's something that is permanent regardless of illness or regardless of, you know, what, what status our county is in, purple, red, orange. You can't come back from that type of documentation of, of just kind of system in the county. And I feel like you guys take that very seriously as well. And we know that these mandates that have come down from the governor, there's no way to stop them once they come out of his mouth. So, I think that this type of proactive resolution is exactly what this county needs to be able to protect ourselves from such tyranny coming into our county. I think you guys are on the right track and I'm excited to hear more from you guys. So, I wanted to just say thank you again.
All right, thank you, Courtney. Appreciate the work you've done on this as well. I want to add for the future public commenters that at three minutes, because it's on the Zoom, your, your, your mic will get cut off. So, it's not that we're trying to be rude, just know that your mic's going to go off at three minutes, okay? Not that you've gone over anything and I appreciate the respect. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Greg Thompson and he will be followed by Adams.
Okay, hello, Greg.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah, there is some, there is some feedback in the background.
All right, let me move to a quieter, quieter location. Yeah, my name's Greg Thompson, a member of the Sutter County community for over 30 years. And can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I work in agriculture and I want to thank all of the supervisors, healthcare workers, all our public service workers for the great work that they do. I appreciate you taking a stance to push back against vaccine mandates and making this compulsory. I would like to see the facts that you presented and have a chance to study those because I believe some of our agencies are compromised and some of the information we are receiving is, has some agenda behind it to, to drive fear. And this is not right. For example, there's been very little said about myocarditis in young people. And I said earlier in the meeting today, I will not allow my children to receive a jab that jeopardizes their life because myocarditis is a disease that affects the heart, that scars the heart, that's a permanent, permanent thing for the rest of their lives. So, I don't think the dangers from the vaccine have been fully enumerated to the public. So, that's one thing that I think should also be part of the education so people can make informed choices. And we begin a lot of top-down, heavy-handed fear-mongering that is driving people into a fear-dimming. And when you do that to people, their immune systems become compromised. We wear face masks, we're driven into isolation. Isolation and fear lower our immunity. So, I look forward to seeing the facts you presented and studying them and let's help everybody get to the truth. That's what we need. We need to come together as communities, stand together, and even if we disagree, let's stick together and love one another because that's what we do in Sutter County.
That's right.
So, thank you guys so much. Hang in there and let's pray for one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. We really, we really do appreciate those comments and we will be posting those facts here on our, on our website so they'll be visible for you. And we can also arrange to send you a copy as well if you just let us know, okay? All right, next speaker?
The next speaker will be Adams, followed by Matt Nelson.
Okay. Hello, Adam.
It's Dee Adams.
Oh, Dee.
Hi, Chairman Flores.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you so much. I, I have a comment on one of the consent agendas, but first I want to applaud you about the mask mandate or the vaccine mandate. Would love to see a mask mandate too coming from you since I believe they're ineffective. However, I, I want to make sure it's appropriate to comment on a consent calendar item at this time.
We can have you do that now or I can have you do it at consent. That is your, I'll give you that choice today since there's so many speakers.
Okay, since I'm already here, let me just go ahead and say what I want to say.
Okay.
I want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors, to Matt Conant, to Director Hay for the hard work and due diligence that they have done to put together the stop signs at Pleasant Grove and Housley Road. They're alleviating the fears of a lot of people down there and they listened to us, they were compassionate, and they cared about the community and they, we all like put our elbows to work and got this done. I appreciate the time and effort they put into it.
Okay. Great, thank you very much for that. Supervisor Conant, I'll give you a second if you wanted to comment on that. It's up to you. You need to unmute though.
Keep moving with the speakers.
Okay.
We'll deal with that later.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Next speaker will be Matt Nelson.
Okay, hi, Matt. Followed by who? Sorry, supervisor, all right. Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Hi, Matt.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, my name's Matt Nelson and I've been in this community teaching as a teacher for about 25 years. I'm a retired AP Biology teacher at Sutter High School and now I'm teaching in our county at a, a, a private school and I'm teaching US history. And I don't know, I think both of those subjects have really helped me with this subject. I know the science. I've educated myself on the science and I've educated myself on the laws that are being broken by these mandates and these, these vaccines. You know, there's no legal authority that can require you to get a vaccine against your will. You have the right to do what you want with your body. It's unlawful for you, your employer, to assume you're a threat to the health and safety of others without proof of a medical doctor. You know, there's so many laws that are being broken by these vaccine mandates and, and these, you know, what's coming is these vaccine passports and it's, it's just tearing people apart. It's tearing families apart. It's, and like Greg said, we don't know, as far as the science goes, there's so much that you just don't know. There's been so many lies, so many lies about the PCR test, so many lies about people that can be, have no symptoms and be passing this. And, you know, every epidemiologist would tell you that that's not possible. And it's just, over and over again, there's just so many things that are mysteries like this autoimmune disease, this ADE. It's not something that can happen right away. It's, it's something that can happen three years later. And there's, you know, most epidemiologists and immunologists know about this study, study on COVID-1 that was, that was done and a lot of the animals didn't make it because of this autoimmune. This is not something that happens right away. There's also, there's also mysteries about sterilization. I'm, I'm holding in my hand a study from Pfizer and it was, it was released to the world by a whistleblower and this, this shows that, you know, the ovaries have more ACE2 receptors and are being attacked, are being, you know, these spike proteins that the vaccine is injected in you goes to the ovaries. And is this a sterilization? I mean, some of these things, we won't know for, you know, many years. And this autoimmune thing could happen next, this flu season, or next flu season, or the next flu season. And there's just so many unknowns and people have a right to wait and see, okay? These vaccines are not vaccines. They, they're mRNA, you know.
Did we lose, did we lose them?
That was, that was three minutes.
Oh, that was three minutes, okay. All right, so just a reminder to the speakers, the volume goes off at three minutes, so we just want you to be aware as we move forward, okay? So, we'll hear for the next speaker and thank you to Matt. If you need to speak again, you know, please feel free to do so, okay? Next, next speaker?
Next speaker is Elise and then Vicki will be after her.
Hi, guys, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Elise.
Hi. I've lived here my whole life and I just want to thank you guys for everything that you're doing and listening to us and hearing us. But I did want to ask that if, if I'm one that's employed in the medical field, is this going to make a difference for me? There's a lot of time-sensitive pressure that I need to be vaccinated nearly immediately.
Well, you know, if it makes a difference for you, we're not sure. I mean, we are, we are taking a stance against the passports for sure. We are taking a stand saying that the community needs to make their own decision for whether or not they get vaccinated. But when you have a mandate from your employer or the state or somebody else, then that's a different responsibility. It's not within our authority. So, I'm not sure exactly how to answer it, but I would like, I know we're doing public comment.
Chair Flores, I'm sorry to interrupt. We're not allowed to comment on public comments from the public.
Got it, okay. All right, no more commenting. So, anyway, get in touch with me, Elise, directly and we can talk, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Right, thanks. Okay, next speaker. That sounded weird, by the way. That sounded like somebody, like God was talking to me there with that echo.
The next speaker is Vicki, who will be followed by Christina.
Hi, Vicki.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Loud and clear.
I just, I had to change my whole comment, you guys. I'm just so proud of you. I want to thank you so much for standing, standing so strong, standing for the people. I'm just, I have tears in my eyes because I'm so excited about it. I'm so, thank you so much because I know that takes a lot of courage to stand against tyranny, but you are definitely representing us, so thank you so much. One thing I do want to encourage you to do is to please put businesses on notice that they will be held liable for any discrimination of the public based on our vaccine status. But again, my comments could be so quick because I'm just really, really proud of you guys. So, thank you so very much for standing because I know it, it cannot be easy, but we, the people appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vicki. Appreciate your comments. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Christina and then after Christina will be Richard.
Hi, Christina.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear. You sound great.
Okay, awesome. First of all, thank you, guys. Wonderful that you're all standing against the imposition of the American's freedom. Awesome, good job. Secondly, I just want to address the fact that we're constantly being told to believe the science. And even when you guys spoke, you put the word "fact" emphatically before all of these different statements. And I just want to encourage people to recognize that that's actually pretty manipulative because science is always, we're constantly learning more with science and mRNA has been being studied for decades and there is a reason that it hasn't come out before now. There's a lot of data about the past testing of mRNA and I encourage everyone to look into that. I also want to encourage people that when you hear the word "fact" about things like COVID numbers, COVID deaths, there is a conflict of interest with the hospitals. They're being paid more money by the government to call deaths COVID deaths. And anytime you have money involved, there's a conflict of interest. There's a conflict of interest with the pharmaceutical companies right now. They're making an unimaginable amount of money. So, when we have science that can no longer be questioned and we're told that it's fact and we're told to believe it, that's not science. That's propaganda and we need to be extremely careful that we are doing our own research before we make a decision whether or not to put something in our bodies. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Christina. Appreciate the comments. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker will be Richard. After Richard will be Lisa.
Richard? Hi, Richard. Are you there, Richard? You're on mute, just in case. There you go.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Chairman Flores. I want to thank you and your board because your county board is a little unusual for most in our state. You actually try to listen to the people that call in and talk. I want to thank you for that and give you kudos. I actually live a little bit out of the county, but I now do over half of my shopping in the county because I'm not harassed for not wearing a mask because I can't wear one. And the whole attitude there with your general population is a whole lot better. People seem to have a lot more common sense and a lot more respect. And I wanted to talk about how we have this thing about these doctors and we're giving them authority that I really believe we shouldn't. And these aren't the doctors that in hospitals actually do care for people, the doctors that actually practice healing. Those aren't the doctors I'm talking about. Talking about the doctors that are throwing all these policies at you to try to approve. These doctors don't practice medicine and a lot of them are trying to play God, including the ones that have made this vaccine and done a lot of these other policies. And I have to implore you to try your best not to listen to doctors who aren't elected officials to try to tell you how we need to behave or not. It is incredibly dangerous and that's what a lot of doctors in Nazi Germany did and that's why we had the Nuremberg Trials. And the laws that came from them that make it unlawful internationally to force any kind of injection upon a human being. They call it an international crime or crime against humanity. And there's supposed to be punishment for doctors and others that try to do that. And, and I want to talk a little bit about the fear-mongering, you know, with the past few years before this pandemic hit us, which there is something that's out there, but they have exaggerated it really bad with a lot of fear-mongering. We had a lot of different movies. Everyone remembers Z Nation, but we also had a three-year series called The Last Ship. And all these things were about a bug that was killing off masses of the population. And this is a response that so many people have had to something that's not killing off more people than the flu. And honestly speaking, there's so many things that we could have done better to save lives and now so many people are hurt and so many lives are devastated for a long time. They just hope that you guys would continue to listen to the folks that are calling in there because they do have a lot of science and they do have a lot of evidence that they can direct you to where you can actually get to truth and not something that's already predetermined by CDC so-called doctors that really don't know how to practice medicine. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Richard. Appreciate your comments very much. And next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Lisa.
And who will follow, Lisa?
Currently, we have nobody else requesting to give public comments.
Okay, hi, Lisa.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Loud and clear.
Okay, I want to say that I've lived in Yuba-Sutter area for about 38 years. I love the town. I've raised my children here. They came back. My grandkids are growing up here and it's a good little place to raise a family. I appreciate all that you do. I appreciate that you, that all of you said you don't want to mandate vaccines. Thank you so much. I want to give you some things to back up what you believe. I don't know if you know what race has the lowest percentage of vaccinated people, but it's the African-American race. So, in New York, where restaurants are requiring vaccine passports to eat inside, you can look at their restaurants and it's filled with vaccinated white people while African-American families are sitting outside eating. And I'm sorry, but that's racist and I for one will not tolerate that in this county and I hope you won't either and it sounds like you won't. One other thing is that in Romania, they could only get 24% of their population to get vaccinated because you see these people lived under communist rule and they said, "We're not doing that anymore." So, with having 76% of the population unvaccinated, what did that do as far as COVID? Well, as of now, the count is they only have 31 cases of coronavirus in a country of 19 million people. My point in that is clearly vaccine mandates are not the answer to stop COVID. So, I don't have a problem with people that want to be vaccinated. I just believe in Sutter County, that we believe in freedom, we believe in choice, and I hope that you will continue to run our county as a constitutional county. Please don't mandate vaccines in Sutter County. And thank you so much for everything you do and we really appreciate that all of you seem to be on the side of science and on the side of freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate your comments. We have one more speaker, I believe.
The next speaker is Vaughn and after Vaughn, we The next speaker is Bon, and after Bon, we currently have no other speaker.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Hello, Bon.
Hi, yes, it's Bonnie Hughes.
Oh, hi Bonnie.
You can hear me okay? Hi, yes. I just, I, what I heard at the beginning was just totally amazing, and I had a lot to say to you, that I already spoke to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors this morning. I wish they were on board as you are. This is quite amazing what you said. I do question the fact sheet, which I would love to see, because that, like you said, that it's a lot of that what is not fact that we have read over. I just wanted to come on to say thank you. I appreciate you doing that. This last weekend, I stood with our healthcare workers on the street in front of the hospital over right out to protest the tyranny that's happening in their jobs there, and very heartbreaking to see that they're going to lose their job unless they get this jab, the gene modification injection that's going to come into their system. And also, mothers may have to also be required to have that when they go in to have their baby, which means that the baby's going to have the shot too. That's just unbelievable. But anyway, I just want to say thank you so much. I want to encourage you too, that there's going to be another Yuba-Sutter for Freedom Rally. It's going to be on the Clusa Highway between Gray and Highway 20, I mean Highway 99, this is Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00, and would love to have you come. Would love to have you come and also, you know, have a rally of stop this vaccine mandate, and do appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Bonnie. Madam Clerk, do we have any further speakers?
We do. Chaney is the next speaker, and after Chaney, we do not have another speaker.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Hi, Chaney.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You're coming in loud.
Okay, hi. Okay, first of all, I want to reiterate what everyone's saying, and thank you so much for the stance you're taking and sticking with the constitutional and, or the constitution. Sorry, I'm nervous. Anyway, we just thank you guys so much for listening to We the People and taking a stand. It's very courageous. I do want to ask, I just heard about the concentration camps, excuse me, the COVID shielding camps that the CDC is talking about, that like taking away, or I don't know, I didn't read too much on it, but I was wondering if you guys are familiar with it or heard anything about it, and if you will take as strong a stance against that, if that were to come to our county.
Chaney, we're not allowed to basically speak at this point in the meeting, so if you mind, if you don't mind, you can reach out to one of us, or, you know, me directly, or even staff, and we can speak to you directly about it, okay?
Okay, okay. So I guess I'll just say, if you guys look into that, will you please take a stand against that too? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk, are there any further speakers?
So, they're not allowed to speak on anything?
Is Bijan coming on, or not? Madam Clerk?
No, I believe that concludes our public comment.
Okay, I have a Bijan on. Oh, not any longer. Okay. All right, that concludes the public comment. Again, I want to say thank you to everybody who participated in public comment. And at this point, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Before we do that, we will be pulling item number 14 for our supervisors. If you want to pull item number 14 from consent, that will come back to the next meeting for item 14. Then I'll ask the board, do you have any other items that you'd like to pull? Okay, there being none, Supervisor Baines, go ahead. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, Chief, I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent calendar, removing-
Mike Ziegemeyer, second.
Item number 14.
Okay, and then Supervisor Ziegemeyer, seconded it. You're, okay, so we've got a first and a second. All those in favor signify, well, roll call vote. Sorry, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes our consent portion of the calendar or the agenda. Now we're going to move on to the public hearing. So at this point, I'll hear a staff presentation on this next item 15, and I believe Doug, you're speaking.
If you could just give us one minute, Chair.
Sure. Okay, we're having a couple of technical issues. We're trying to work through it right now.
Libby, are you currently logged in right now and ready to give your presentation?
Chaney, he's listed as a attendee instead of a panelist.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hey.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, good. I am now able to join you. Thank you, Doug Libby, Principal Planner for Development Services, for this next agenda item. In 2003, Sutter County and the city of Sacramento approved the Natoma Basin Habitat Conservation Plan, and at the same time, adopted an implementation agreement and environmental impact report. And in, at the same time, the Natoma Basin Conservancy was established as our plan operator. The HCP provides for 17,500 acres of planned development in the Natoma Basin, of which Sutter County has allocated 7,467 acres. Now, the implementation agreement that was adopted with the plan requires the city of Sacramento and Sutter County to fund the plan's operating program through the collection of development fees that are adjusted annually. Now, as part of, historically, Sutter County has not had any development in the Natoma Basin for many years. However, the city of Sacramento, as you're aware, has had significant development to build out their portion of the HCP. With the November 17th, 2020 approval of our Lakeside at Sutter Point development, staff feels that it is appropriate as an implementation measure to bring forward an ordinance that would provide for the collection of mitigation fees and transfer those fees to the Natoma Basin Conservancy. Now, each year, the conservancy is required to recalculate the HCP finance model, and as plan operator, through their Board of Directors, they make a recommendation as to the fee amount. The fee currently, as adopted by the city and what is proposed by the county, is $40,032 per gross acre to be developed when there is no mitigation land dedication, or $25,032 per gross acre to be developed when there is land mitigation to be dedicated. Now, fees that are required to be paid must be paid prior to ground-disturbing activities occurring, which is typically prior to a grading permit being issued. Now, the ordinance that is before you basically establishes a framework for the collection of fees and allowing them to be transferred to the conservancy. Now, due to the nature of the ordinance, in addition, a county council's office, who reviewed it, the Audit and Controllers Office, also reviewed the ordinance, together with our Lakeside at Sutter Point developers, as well as conservancy staff. This item went before your Public Works Sports Service Committee on August 12th, and was moved forward to your full board today. So staff is recommending that your board conduct a public hearing, introduce the attached ordinance establishing the Natoma Basin Habitat Conservation Plan mitigation fee, as well as the procedures for the collection and transfer of the fees to the Natoma Basin Conservancy, waive the full reading, direct the clerk to read the title only, and continue the item to your next regular meeting for adoption, as well as adopt the resolution attached to your staff report that would establish the mitigation fee to be collected for authorized development in the Natoma Basin. That will conclude my comments, unless you have any questions.
Okay, thank you for that, Doug. Before I bring it back for open public comments, supervisor, sorry, CAO Smith, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Chair Flores. I just had a question for Doug. Doug, I wanted to make sure, this, I'm looking at the establishment part. This is in lieu of satisfying other federal and state Endangered Species Act monitoring programs, so that means, or does that mean that if we weren't charging this, there would be other fees that developers would have to pay, or things that they would have to do to mitigate? But because we have the NBC in existence, they pay it to that instead?
So part of the permitting of the HCP was the, because it's a partnership with the city of Sacramento, as well as the wildlife agencies. And what I mean by wildlife agencies, that would be California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So the county for participation received an incidental take permit, which allows for our portion of development within the basin to occur. There is additional permitting that will be necessary with the Army Corps of Engineers, and, because they're not assignatory to the HCP.
Okay. Supervisor Conant, I know you had some comments, but can I bring it back to the public first, and then back to the board, or did you have a quick comment?
Excuse me, Chair, we could please ask for public comment first, and then close the public hearing before any additional-
Right, that's my plan. I just wanted to ask Supervisor Conant if you had a clarifying question or anything else. Thank you.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, no problem. Okay, any other comments? I'm going to open up the public, I'm sorry, open up the public hearing, and I'll ask the public for any comments. I'm sorry, I can't, I didn't understand what you said, Madam Clerk.
We don't currently have any public comments for this item.
Okay, thank you. Since there are no public comments, we're going to close the public comment period, and I'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Supervisor Conant, you have the first comment.
Yes, Doug, a question for Doug. Doug, does it appear that the acreage set aside is going to be adequate for the development in that area?
So the, Mr. Chairman, the Lakeside developers have actually already dedicated land to the conservancy, which is going to provide for their mitigation land for a significant portion of the Lakeside development. I believe they still have a small, fairly small additional land that they have to mitigate for still, but nothing that would hold up the implementation of Lakeside getting begun.
And Doug, what about the development of industrial sites, if that came to fruition?
That would be up to the future commercial and industrial developers to find mitigation land within the basin, and that would be a negotiation between the farmers that exist there today and that developer.
Okay.
I'd be willing to make a motion to approve.
Okay, let me see if there's any further discussion first. Any further discussion from the board on this? Okay, there being none, then I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Mike Ziegemeyer, second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. I'll have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. I'd ask the clerk to please read the title of the clerk, or the ordinance only, please.
An Ordinance of the County of Sutter Establishing the Natoma Basin Habitat Conservation Plan Mitigation Fee.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Doug. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a good afternoon.
All right, you too. We'll carry this to the next meeting. We'll look forward to hearing from you again. Next item, item number 16, Donna Johnson.
Good afternoon, honorable Board of Supervisors. I am here to present a redistricting call to you. I'm going to share my screen, so please bear with me. Okay, so we have to redistrict every 10 years, and every 10 years, this authority is from the California Constitution and California's Elections Code, which requires us to perform this function. Significant laws have changed since 2011. Some things that were options, such as outreach and things like that, are now mandatory. And we're hoping that technology will help outreach compared to what we had available to us in 2011. Focus severely impacted the timeline for census. The delay of United States census data was to be coming into us much, much sooner than it will be. The current deadline to adopt new maps for us in the county is December 15th, 2021. Census data to the state is likely as late as September 30th, and census data to us is as late as October 31st, 2021. Here's kind of an illustration for you of the timeline. So on 9/30, as I mentioned, the data is released to the census from the statewide database. And then not until December, sorry, October 31st, the state will release data to counties. We're hoping to have final map adoption by the board on 11/16, and then an ordinance that'll become effective for the new maps with the new lines drawn on December 16th, which coincidentally is the very first day for signatures and loop for anyone running in the primary of 2022. Generally speaking, counties have four months to update their databases, and as you can see by this, we'll have just a few days to try to make that happen. How we draw lines is set by the California Constitution, the Voting Rights Act of 1965, and the U.S. Constitution. So we have to respect several things in this process. Geography of local areas, geography of cities. You cannot favor or disfavor any political party. The lines must be compact, and we must consider communities of interest. A community of interest is something that is a shared group of people who have a similar situation. Maybe it's a major employer in an area such as Silicon Valley. Maybe it's geography, maybe their rural versus urban areas in the county. Maybe it's lifestyle, recreation, ethnic groups, political subdivisions such as schools. What is not a community interest is anything with a relationship to a political party incumbents or political interests. And part of the process requirements we have to do, we have to do excessive, excuse me, extensive outreach. We have to have a minimum of four public hearings, which is what I'm asking you to approve today, with at least one of those being on an evening or a weekend day, and abide by the same redistricting principles set forth by California's Elections Code. In that outreach requirement, we have to contact the media. We have to do civic engagement and community group outreach. We have to have live translation of hearings, online publications of meeting schedules, agendas, minutes, and so forth. Online publication of draft maps seven days in advance of adoption. And recording or summaries of hearings and workshops must be published online, and that internet website must be online for a full 10 years. The tentative calendar you see here before you, September 30th, again, is that first date that census data will become available. We have received some legacy data, which is not really workable at this point, but it gives us a rough idea of what the number of population is. The next step is the data analysis by the census district population, so forth. Then we get updated data on October 31st. September 28th is the first public hearing we're asking you to adopt. That'll be before the maps come out, but is to make sure that everyone understands community of interest, and we can talk about a little bit more in-depth about redistricting process. We hope to release the first set of maps and have a second public hearing on October 12th, during the regular schedule for supervisors' meeting, and a third public hearing and release a second set of maps, and then on November 4th, and then introduce an ordinance for that proposed maps on November 9th, with final adoption of the official map and ordinance on November 16th. The final deadline to adopt maps, again, it was December 16th, but on December 16th, the ordinance will become effective, and again, that's the first day to file for signatures and loop for anybody running in the June 22 election. The calendar does not include- The calendar does not include public outreach workshops during this process. We have those, we'll be having those in addition. They may be live or they may be posted or something like that. And that concludes my presentation. And the recommendation at this point is to request that you receive this presentation and allow for us the setting of these four public hearings.
Okay, thank you, Donna. At this time, do you have a draft of what the maps are going to look like? I know all of us would be curious of that. Is that, is there anything like that available yet?
I do not. However, the raw legacy data did indicate that we only had a population growth in 10 years of 5%.
Okay.
Apparently, the raw data also indicated that we're within an 8% threshold. And the real requirement is a 10% threshold between each of the super territorial districts.
So really, there won't be a lot of change, sounds like, right?
Not unless there are communities of interest that represent themselves, that may change some of the lines.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the Board of Supervisors? Can I entertain a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, Supervisor Ziegemeyer first.
Second.
Second Supervisor Conant, a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Donna. We look forward to seeing that and any way we can assist in informing the public about what's going on. We're there for you, okay? Okay, item number 17, Scott Riddle, Senior Civil Engineer, for the presentation.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board of Supervisors. This is Scott Riddle, Senior Civil Engineer with Development Services Department. This item is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of completion for the Fortner Road Bridge Replacement Project B1635 and authorization for the Chair of the Board to execute the final balancing change order, number four, in the amount of $58,955.70. Construction to replace the Fortner Road Bridge began on February 1st, 2021, with work occurring during the winter and concluding on April 21st, 2021, within the time specified in the contract. The completed work meets the requirements of the contract documents. The latest version of the Caltrans Local Assistance Manual requires the governing local agency to formally accept the work at a project's completion and a board resolution authorizing project acceptance is required. Project acceptance is formalized by a notice of completion issued by the Director of Development Services. During construction of the Fortner Road Bridge, the contractor, Martin Brothers Construction, encountered several areas of differing site conditions, mostly soft soil conditions, resulting in additional unsuitable material that needed to be removed. It also required additional rock slope protection and structural backfill to complete the project on schedule. Contract change order number four itemizes the final work items that resulted in material overages or underruns and were needed to complete the bridge replacement. All total, the change orders amounted to $58,955.70, which exceeds the remaining change order authority of the Director of Development Services, but is still within the budgeted amount for the project. The final construction cost for the Fortner Road Bridge Replacement Project is $706,157.97. And I would take questions at this time.
Any questions from the board? Entertain a motion?
I make a motion.
All right, I have a first Supervisor Ziegemeyer, a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor McKelley, a roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay, very good. The ayes have it and the motion carries. I'll move on now to item number, oh, thank you, Scott, appreciate it. And then I'll move on now to Neil Hay, Director of Development Services, for item number 18.
Good afternoon, Chair Flores and Honorable Supervisors. The item before you is consideration of an additional airport grant from the FAA. This grant is in the amount of $32,000. It's intended to help the airport with operational expenses and combating the spread of pathogens as well as debt service payments. Essentially, the FAA has distributed these type of grants throughout the nation to all airports. And this matter did not go before the Public Works Support Services Committee because they gave us a little bit over a week to receive and execute the grant. Should your board take the recommended action, which would authorize the acceptance of the grant and adopt the resolution designating myself the Director of Development Services as the county's official representative, then we would electronically sign and execute the grant before Thursday, which is the federal deadline. And I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions. Supervisor McKelley?
Yeah, Neil, just out of curiosity, I mean, it's always nice to get some extra money, but specifically, is there anything that you already have in mind that you might be able to use that for at the airport?
So there are. The county for the last couple of years has been working to rectify what's been deemed a restricted area. It was some stormwater ponds from years ago that we have been having soil sample and well testing done. And we've been working with the state to hopefully conclude those activities this fiscal year. And so this grant should go towards addressing those costs.
Good, thank you.
I had a question. Neil, did the charter school down there ever fix their water issues? I didn't follow up on that after.
So not yet, but they have been in conversations with the Sutter Huts Regional Aviation Association. Essentially, between the two of them, they are looking to fund and finance the improvements. The county did essentially exploration of the water line and identified the segment to be essentially replaced and oversized in order to provide sufficient water. It's my understanding that the Aerostom Academy is actually looking and considering to expand and add another building there. So I believe they may be in the design phase of that structure.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Supervisor Ziegemeyer, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, then I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
First from Supervisor Ziegemeyer, second from Supervisor McKelley. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Okay, the ayes have it and the motion carries. Thank you, Neil, for that presentation. And you're up for number 19 as well.
Thank you very much. Actually, it'll be Casey Murray, who, from our Planning Department, that'll present the next item. And so for Gina's reference, he's listed as a attendee as well, similar to Doug's situation.
Okay, welcome, Casey. Casey out there, Madam Clerk.
Not currently.
Okay, Neil, I don't know if you know.
Oh, he's listed as C. Murray there, but.
Can we allow him in, like as an individual speaker or no? Madam Clerk?
Yes, he's just been allowed into the room and should be able to speak now.
Okay, thank you.
He's corrupt, Casey, you're just muted.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me now?
We can. You're coming in kind of light, but if you can speak up, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you. Casey Murray, Associate Planner. This item is a request to rescind and replace a development rights agreement to reflect property line modifications proposed by a lot line adjustment. And in 1999, the Planning Commission approved variance number 9809 and tentative parcel map 9815 to allow the creation of three parcels that did not meet the 80-acre minimum parcel size requirement and to allow the division of an 82.29-acre parcel into a 3.79-acre parcel and a 3.1-acre parcel, each containing one residence and a 75.4-acre agricultural remainder. This project required the property owners to enter into a development rights and open space easement agreement with the county prohibiting any residential development on the 75.4-acre agricultural remainder. The current landowners have submitted a lot line adjustment together with a request to rescind the existing development rights agreement and replace it with a new agreement. Landowners desire to adjust the property lines between the 3.7-acre parcel and the 75.4-acre agricultural remainder of the previous parcel map project with an adjoining 86.6-acre parcel. The proposed lot line adjustment will result in a 143.5-acre agricultural parcel being lot one and 18.5-acre agricultural processing parcel being lot two and will increase the 3.79-acre parcel to 3.8 acres being lot three. An adjustment of the property lines necessitates replacing the existing agreement so the area encumbered by the agreement is consistent. If this item is approved, the lot line adjustment will be approved and the property owners will enter a new development rights agreement that will be recorded concurrently with the revised property line descriptions. And it is recommended that the board approve this project by adopting a resolution to rescind and replace the existing development rights agreement to reflect property line modifications proposed by the lot line adjustment. No entertaining any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that, Casey. And any questions from the board? Supervisor Conant, first? Sorry, you're on mute, Supervisor Conant.
Yeah, Dan, I think I should probably recuse myself. He's a virtual friend, the guy doing this.
Recording in progress. FEMA mapping and that type of stuff, is that, any of those things need to be considered in this variance?
Well, what's requested is to rescind and replace a development rights agreement for a lot line adjustment. There's no development, new development. You'll see on page 325 shows the lot line adjustment map what's going to be the final configuration of the three lots.
Any clarifying?
But wouldn't their intention to split up lots be at some point to build?
Yeah, so the lots aren't being split. You have, start out with three lots and you end up with three lots. So you're just adjusting the property lines between the existing.
I have no further questions, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Baines. Any other questions?
No, I make a, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve from Supervisor Ziegemeyer, second from Supervisor Baines. All those, well, sorry, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Move on. Can someone let Supervisor Conant know he can come back in? Okay, great. Before we move on to the next item, we still got quite a bit left in this meeting because we're going to have some other things. So we're going to take a five-minute break, so 4:27. Report back in here, guys, and it's 4:22 now, so 4:27, come back in.
Recording stopped.
Okay, clerk left us.
If we can have just one moment, please, Chair?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Dan, is that yours that echoes? Or is it the, it kind of echoes a little bit?
Yeah, it's, am I echoing now? I don't think so.
No, just when you're speaking to them.
Yeah, they're echoing. I don't know.
Okay.
I think because they're in the big conference room and they might have to be running more than one.
Oh, it sounded funny when they were telling me not to comment. I was like, oh, gosh.
Yeah.
It sounded like divine intervention.
How are you feeling, Supervisor Conant?
Good. I just had a little bit of a sore throat still, but a little sneeze and cough once in a while, but it didn't do all right. Lot better today than yesterday.
Hey, you know, it's crazy. I was just talking to Steve earlier. My mom got.
Hey, you know, it's crazy. I was just talking to Steve earlier. Uh, my mom got COVID and she went to Montana.
Excuse me, excuse me, the meeting is still live.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought we were offline. I did too.
Adam clerk, if you want to go ahead, let me know when we're ready.
We're good to start. I'll start reporting again. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
You're now recording.
Okay, thank you very much and welcome back, everybody. Our next item is item number 20, and we'll start with Nancy O'Hara, Director of Health and Human Services.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Oh, they, they did, they did a walkthrough with me this morning. Because I have a PowerPoint presentation I want to share. And now it acts different.
It may be the bottom of the screen, the share screen button?
That's it. Thank you. Share screen. Sorry about that. So I am here this afternoon. Uh, thank you, uh, Supervisor Flores and, and board. I'm Nancy O'Hara. I'm the Health and Human Services Director for Sutter County. And this afternoon I'm here to um request uh, that the board recommend um, that the Sutter County join the Partnership Health Plan of California Commission. Uh, it is recommended that the Board of Supervisors introduce the attached chapter 89 of the Sutter County Ordinance Code, authorizing the county to join Partnership Health Plan of California Commission, waive the full reading, direct the clerk to read the title only, and continue the item to the September 14th, 2021, next regular meeting for adoption. So this little PowerPoint is um, just to sort of go over what, why we are requesting this change. So in 2013, the, uh, the state actually mandated that 18 counties in Northern Cali, mostly in Northern California, I believe they're all in California, uh, be put into a regional model managed medical system. Yeah, we had no input into that and we are currently still in that regional model because in 2018, the state again put us in the regional model without any input from Sutter County. So the model we've been in, we've had no input in whatsoever. It's been the county that's mandated that we be in this model. And even though the, the state was well aware that the county had issues with the model, providing the types of services that we want for our uh, medical recipients. Um, Senator Nielsen in 2018 did an audit. In fact, our board did submit a letter of support for that audit back in 2018. In the 2019, it uh, the audit, they really released the report and it was found that uh, many of our medical beneficiaries did not have reasonable access to care. And there were many roadblocks to that care. And it was recommended that the counties, that these counties transition to a county operated health system, so uh, for model of care. And that is what partnership would be. They would be, I'm sorry, you know what, I'm not used to being on camera, so probably looking weird too. Sorry. Um, so they, that is what partnership would be, would be a county, um, county organized health system. The um, the 2019 report found that um, even though currently the regional model has two organizations, that's California Health and Wellness and Anthem Blue Cross that are in the managed medical, it's uh, if, the 2019 audit discovered that most of the time people are, providers are only signed up for one or the other. So they're not signed up for both. So if I'm going to the doctor, if I'm going to my regular PCP and that piece, the primary care physician is under Anthem Blue Cross and I can go to them, but if I need to go to a specialist and that specialist is only with California Health and Wellness, I'm sort of stuck. So where do I go? I have to go far out of the region to get there. And as most of you might realize is that people on, on medical may not have the um, the transportation means to get to those areas that are so far apart. And they did find that people needing specialized care, we're, we're having to travel, some of them hundreds of miles to get that care. And so partnership, the COs model, sorry, the COs model, the county um, organized health system model with partnership would likely have a greater proportion of medical providers in our area that serve our, our, our uh, recipients for medical. And partnership also is a nonprofit organization and they reinvest into the community. And so they put money into um, attracting new providers, new medical providers. So there are, currently there are 10 counties um, that are looking, that have been meeting. Uh, this is not new. This started probably back, I want to say 2016. It was before I actually came to work for Sutter County. Um, but yeah, definitely in 2017, 2018, so definitely at least four years. So this is not new. We've been discussing this for several years. Um, and it's been a well-known, well-known information. Um, so the existing model has a history of delivering inadequate services based on the 2019 audit. And also just all the, the 10 counties are just looking for a, a better plan for their medical recipients. Uh, new providers will be selected by the state. Um, based on an RFP process. That would be the two plan model that we're, I'm sorry, I, I'm getting confused because it's covering part of my screen, so I have to look on it at a different, different angle. Sorry. Um, so that would be the two plan model that we currently have. We have, the 10 counties are, are looking to leave that model and move to the county operated system, health system. And the, the existing model has a history of delivering inadequate services. The partnership health model that has a positive approval outlined in the 2019, outlined in the 2019 audit, they're not perfect. No, no organization is perfect. Um, and they, they do strive to improve. Um, the state, if we stay with the two options model, they would have to do an RFP. The RFP then people would bid for the RFP, there's no guarantee that that would be California Health and Wellness and Anthem Blue Cross. It could be the same two, it could be two different ones, we don't know. Um, with the COs model, the county does participate in the selection and we have input into that operation. Uh, the two option plan, the governance structure does not include any input from the county. And in the COs model plan, the county has a representation sitting on the commission. So I, I mentioned that 10 counties are involved and uh, there's a list of the 10 counties here. Colusa, Glen, Nevada, Placer, Pluma, Sierra, Sutter, Tahima, and Yuba. As you can see, we're all very geographically close. Um, Nevada County Board of Supervisors just passed their second reading of the ordinance this, this morning. Yuba County passed their first reading and also Tahima County. The other counties are pending at this time. Uh, and we all have, uh, it's all scheduled and of course, you know, just different times based on board meetings. We have about 35,000 people who are on medical managed care. And of those approximately, well, it's a little, not quite 23,000 are with Anthem Blue Cross and about 12,000 are with California Health and Wellness. Um, they are supposed to be provided transportation. That's part of the managed medical plan. And that's part of the services that they are uh, required to provide. However, we did meet with some of the medical recipients and had a, a, just a little focus group meeting with them, just to discuss, you know, how, how are the services? Are they happy with them? And what we found were people had difficulty scheduling transportation. Some of the, one of the organizations doesn't have transportation scheduling online. And then when they do show, schedule, or they are able to schedule that transportation, the um, orgas, the transportation doesn't show up. And so they are unable to make that appointment. And then their appointment has to be rescheduled. And I think you all know how difficult that can be, especially again with, with somebody who, they may have been taking off work to make that appointment. They might, you know, not get paid for being off work. I mean, there are a lot of factors that go into that. Partnership um, has a lot of experience with expanding. This is not new to them. And I will say that they do not expand, um, they do not take expansion lightly. This is something that they review. Uh, they did, when, they did not approach us, partnership did not approach us. The counties approached partnership. So there, there were 18 counties and this was back in 2017. And they had looked at what other options do we have except for our, the two plan option that we have that was current, was, you know, was not working. It was clear that that, the two option plan was not working for our, our medical recipients. There was lack of medical care. They, they weren't able to see specialists. And so what would work better? And these 18 counties reviewed what was, what was available. So what could they do? And they landed on partnership and actually the counties contacted partnership. And partnership came to a meeting. It was in Butte County. And they said, and we approached them, you know, we gave them our presentation. This is why we would like to join you. And they said, you know, we um, let us go back, let us look at the fiscal impacts, let us see if we can operationally, if we can absorb 18 counties. And they came back and said, we can't absorb 18 counties, but we can, we can, we can accept 10 additional counties in. So something that they were very thoughtful about. And um, we immediately said we wanted to be one of those 10. So we were lucky to be one of the 10. So i- if, if this, if we do go to what happens with the medical providers that we currently have, like our hospital, our federally qualified health clinics, things like that, that provide uh, medical care to our uh, medical recipients, they, they then, uh, they stay the same. So if it's passed, it's just that then partnership is the managed medical, the organization. If that is approved by the state, it still has to be approved by the state. If the county approves us, go forward. Um, and again, partnership is a nonprofit health plan uh, that uh, reinvests back into the community to bring providers, attract providers into our area. Okay. The ordinance uh, is, must be to the Department of Healthcare Services at the state, no later than October 10th of 2021. It highlight, the highlights, it authorizes Sutter County to join the existing partnership commission comprised of existing counties. And it is effective upon written approval from the Department of Healthcare Services and execution of a formal agreement with Department of Healthcare Services and Partnership Health Plan. And then at that point, if that were all to uh, take place, then Sutter County members to the commission would be appointed by the Board of Supervisors. And the transition would occur January 1st, 2024. So you can see this is really a lengthy process. So any questions? Did somebody have their hand raised?
Yes, um, CEO Steve Smith, you want to go ahead and tee it up?
Yeah, um, Nancy, maybe you can stop sharing your screen and then we can.
Yeah, sorry. I'm just, this is the first time I've done this.
No, we've had, need patience for all of us today.
Well.
We wanted to make sure the public had a chance to speak and not just write in. So, okay.
Oh, absolutely. Sure. Okay, there we go.
Uh, thank you Chair Flores and Supervisors. Uh, Steve Smith, CEO, some additional information. Um, one was that Butte County also um, passed their first reading, just got that information a few moments ago. So you've got Nevada that's fully passed it. Um, Yuba, Tahima, and Butte that have passed the first reading. I believe Glen and Colusa are going next week. But also, um, I believe Dr. Lou is online and they have some additional information if the clerks can let Sutter HHS into speak.
Dr. Lou, are you?
Yes, I'm here. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure if you're able to see me, but I, I think um, audio is working correct? Yes, you all are nodding.
You're coming loud and clear. Oh, you burped.
Um, okay.
There you are, yeah.
There we go. Uh, so I, um, thank you uh, and to the chair, I, I just would like to add a few additional points. So as Steve, CEO Smith has noted, um, Nevada has fully passed their ordinance on second reading this morning. Butte and Yuba has passed the first reading. Uh, Colusa and Glen are very, and Tahima's too. And then Colusa and Glen are very confident um, in presenting their first reading next week. Um, and then for Sierra, Plumas, and Placer, they'll probably go a couple of weeks later, right? So it's just a matter of timing wise. And I really want to stress that, especially with Yuba passing our first reading, Sutter County does not want to be within what's called a medical desert, right? So the two counties, in addition to sharing me, share hospitals, share multiple other healthcare providers. And there could be a possibility that Sutter would be sort of a medical desert island if all the surrounding counties, Butte, Tahima, Glen, Colusa, Yolo is actually already a partnership county since 2001. And then of course, with Yuba passing the first reading um, of the ordinance, there is that potential and really critical risk of Sutter County being an island if Sutter County does not pass um, the, the ordinance. Um, a couple of other things to highlight is that we continue as county health and human services staff in Sutter County continue to engage with medical providers and medical executives within Yuba County and Sutter County. Uh, we have met with them multiple times uh, throughout April. Also, we met with them to provide them with the draft ordinance outline a week before we met with them in mid-June. Uh, no comments provided at that time from any of the three federally qualified health centers, Anthem Blue, Harmony Health, or Peachtree, and no comments from Ventus Health and Ride Out, nor Southern North Medical Group at that time. And then on August 17th, 2021, I personally also sent them all an email to relay to them the schedule of the ordinance that's being presented to you all, including the proposed schedule, the first reading and the second reading on the 14th of September. And then to, to highlight the informational session that Partnership Health Plan has put together. So please recall that prior to the passage of the non-binding letter of intent, we actually helped to arrange the one-on-one discussion with the CEO of Partnership Health Plan, Ms. Liz Gaboni, with all UBS Sutter Healthcare executives. And then um, at our sort of collaboration, they are hosting multiple, kind of getting to know you webinars for medical executive hospitals and also for medical beneficiary. And then a special one for elected officials very shortly here. And then there's going to be a lot of discussion about potential third model or third option of local governance. I want to make sure you all know that, um, really there's only two options right now. If you stay, uh, we stay with the current regional commercial two plan model, or we go uh, to the COs model with Partnership Health Plan. There's really not any other option, even if, if it's being portrayed as sort of a imperial county subsume under the Commercial Health Plan. There's a lot of hiccups with a lot of potential uh, challenges. One, the current health plans, um, commercial health plans have to successfully bid in the uh, request for proposal. Then they have to, that's one dominate over the other one to get 80% of market share. And then finally, which is the most unsumoutable really, is requesting a federal waiver under the Social Security Act of 1965, 1115 waiver. So hopefully all that technical knowledge provides you with some clarification. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lou. Um, Supervisor Baines, I see you have your hand up. We also have a couple of public speakers. Would you like to speak before them or after?
After, please.
Okay, um, Madam Clerk, can you call up the speakers? Okay, um, Madam Clerk, can you call up the speakers? Madam Clerk, are you there?
Oh, sorry about that, Chairman. The first speaker will be Benjamin Flores and then Mike Prozio.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Flores, if you can hear me okay. I'm Ben Flores, I'm the CEO of Ampli Health. And thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again. Last time that we had this opportunity was about three, four months ago. And I expressed my um opposition to this change. And I expressed my reasons at that time. And I'm here to tell you that nothing has changed since. At that time, it was expected that for the last three months, we were going to learn a little bit more about what partnership is and and what their 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 plans are. But since then, there has been no dialogue, no information exchange between county staff, providers like Ampli Health and partnership. We don't know, for instance, if partnership has the ability to improve the outcomes. It's been said that they will improve the outcomes, but we have no demonstration. They have not been asked to prove that they can do it or not, other than, yes, I can do it, but there is no no proof on on the capacity and or how they can do it. We don't know either, because they have not have, they have not been asked to display their financial and their operational capability uh to absorb this significant growth. They will go almost twice as big as they are right now. So there will be a huge plan at that time, which defeats the concept of a local plan. It will be one of the largest, if not the largest, in the state. Um, we believe that it is not prudent to enter into this arrangement uh without really engaging for us, the providers, as as much as the the supervisors as well, to engage in any detailed conversations about this undertaking. It's been said that they will increase access. I don't know how. And there is really, this is a misguided statement. The providers that are in this in this county are the same providers that are going to be in this county with partnership or with whoever plan you have. The providers will not change. The plans will not bring any additional providers. We have what we have. What we have not done is engage with these providers to find out how are they gonna do it? How are we gonna, how are we gonna work with them? How are we going to have specialty care accessible to them? Bringing partnership is not going to reduce the necessity for some uh members to go to Southern Sacramento or whatever it is to get a specialty care. If there is no specialty care, bringing another plan is not going to change that. So you need to understand that the providers that are here are the same providers that are going to remain with a different plan. My main opposition remains the same. We, as the main providers of primary care, Ampli Health, as the main providers of primary health in this county and six of the counties involved, have not been approached by the county staff by the.
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up, Mr. Flores.
Okay. Again, we have not been asked to get involved in the process. Some of the concerns that Director O'Hara expressed could have been answered if they would have been approached, if they would have approached us to 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 learn how we operate. Again, I am here to oppose this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flores, appreciate your comments. Um, we have another speaker. We have a couple more. So we have, how many more speakers do we have?
We have three more speakers.
Three more, okay. Um, who's next?
Our next speaker is Mike Prozio, and he will be followed by Brian Turnan.
Okay, hello, Mike.
Yes, good afternoon. Thanks, everyone, for taking some time. Uh, my name is Mike Prozio. I'm with Anthem Blue Cross, um, the Regional Vice President. Um, not surprisingly, I'm here to talk to you in opposition to this. Uh, would encourage you to postpone any action, if not directly reject this proposal. Um, as the only health plan currently that serves the residents of your county in all of the the significant markets. We are in the individual market, commonly known as covered California. We write small business, large business, public sector business, Medicare and Medica. Uh, I think Anthem has demonstrated a long-term commitment to your county, uh, providing care in your county. We did come on in twenty fourteen, as was already noted, um, when Medica managed care was first brought to these counties. Um, and yes, there was a rocky transition in many ways. And that's the case anytime you transition to managed care. And many providers will always object to the transition to managed care. They simply do not like it. But we have worked and we've improved over time. Um, some of the the report that was mentioned earlier, uh, we agree with some of the findings, disagree with others. We know that we are doing better. You'll hear next after me from the the other plan that serves the county. And I think they'll say the same thing, that, you know, we've worked out many of the bugs and we're improving. Uh, I would agree with the previous speaker's notions that you can't create providers out of whole cloth. Uh, we frankly think it's a little disingenuous to argue that partnership is going to have volumes of more providers in their network than currently have between Anthem and um Centene. Um, it's difficult in the rural area, especially access to specialists. We recognize that. Uh, we can always do better in that regard. Telehealth is helping. Some of the other innovations that we, as a larger plan, can bring will help us address some of those gaps. But um, as the previous speaker said, I would be interested to see exactly an actual plan of where partnership is going to improve networks in these rural, these rural areas. Um, our concern, kind of getting further to that, three points I want to make in the the three minutes here, or whatever I've got left.
Uh, you have less than a minute, just so you know.
All right, well, this should be competitively bid. We are always talking about competition and the need for competition. This is eradicating competition. You're handing a government, you're handing this product to one plan and moving away from competition. We should also have choice for the Medica recipients. We have choice in every other market. Covered California residents in your county get choice. You're taking away choice. This is basically saying that the county health department knows better for the enrollees than the individuals themselves to choose what they need. And also, I would consider also seriously consider with the new Cal AIM proposal that the state is pushing forward, uh, where we're going to be bringing on new benefits and new programs, ask partnership if they're going to be able to comply with Cal AIM and serve the county in a meaningful way with all of the new requirements under Cal AIM. We, we don't believe so, which is why we think you should continue to have a competitive process, not merely just hand the contract to one vendor.
Okay, thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Okay, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Brian Turnan, and after Brian will be Rick Rosson.
Okay, go ahead, Brian, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, loud and clear, thank you.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, Chair Flores and members of the board, and thank you again for the opportunity today. Uh, as you said, my name is Brian Turnan. I'm the president and CEO of HealthNet and California Health and Wellness. California Health and Wellness is currently providing Medica services to more than eleven thousand uh members in Sutter County. And we've partnered with the county since two thousand and fifteen. And I won't repeat uh Mike's points around the progress that's been made in a relatively bumpy start, but I I do agree with those statements. Um, I'm here today to urge you to reject the proposed model change ordinance before you. This will give the board time to consider alternative models that we have proven to be successful in other rural counties. And the board has until October eighteenth to pass this ordinance, if you so decide. So there's time to pause and evaluate options. I also wanted to comment on on a couple of the uh things mentioned earlier. Not passing this ordinance would certainly not result in the county being a healthcare desert. We would continue to operate as your health plan with our contracted providers and serving your members. We're not advocating for more of the same. We think if if the county wants to take a more active role, we have a model that ensures local governance and significant involvement from the county in community investments. Um, also, we believe that continuing with the two-plan model, one of the objections was um the health plans would have to go through an RFP and may or may not win. I would say if we came together on an alternative model that was supported by the county, by the providers, by the health plans, um, DHCS would likely look very favorable on a united front in the bid process. Last comment on some things that were said earlier is uh, there is no federal waiver required for this model we're talking about. Um, we're doing it now and have never required a federal waiver. So I did send a letter outlining our various concerns with this proposed ordinance and the permanent widespread implications it would have on the Medica members in your county. I just want to touch on a few of them here today. Uh, with the approval of the ordinance, the county would would be withdrawing from the upcoming competitive procurement being conducted by the state, meaning, as Mike said, the county will not have the opportunity to receive and evaluate competing proposals. At the same time, there's been insufficient time over the past few months to conduct enough due diligence between Partnership Health Plan, DHCS, your current plans, and providers. So with the lack of details in this ordinance, approval today seems premature and potentially problematic. So rejecting the ordinance would allow you to keep your options open and consider other delivery models that better suit the needs. As I mentioned, we have experience with these models that really focus on.
Brian, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up, sorry, we just.
So we we would urge you to reject this and take the time to consider other models that meet the goals of local government and local decision-making on community investments. So thanks for the time.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate your comments very much. Okay, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Our next and last speaker for public comment is Rick Rosson.
Okay, welcome, Rick.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Chairman Flores and Supervisors. It's an honor to speak with you today. Um, first of all, um, I want to commend county staff um, who continue to look for better ways to provide care to our Medica enrollees. I think in terms of what our goals are, we are highly aligned. We want to see local governance. We want to see better accountability, and we want to see systems of care surrounding people in the local community accountable and engaged with providers in the local community. Um, the way the regional model has worked up to now, that has not been the case. Um, and we're looking forward as to what our alternatives were. Um, this spring, um, you know, I wrote a letter of support for the LOI because I felt it was important that we continue to look at alternatives. Um, unfortunate, unfortunately, I think one of the issues in this process has been um late engagement of providers. Um, you know, I'll take exception that there has not been engagement with providers because just prior to the LOI, LOI going forward, Dr. Lou uh made a significant outreach and began a conversation. However, I think in the evaluation of the alternatives, we really haven't had substantive uh conversations between the health plans and providers and the county. Um, I'd really like to see alignment of the providers with the county um um to address and get commitments from these health plans to achieve what I believe are our shared goals. Um, as the presentation pointed out, uh, much of that is true. Um, there there have been certain, there have been issues with the existing model. Uh, we do not want more of the same, but we really want to move into something different. We do believe there are alternatives uh within the regional model that could change that um as well as with partnership health. What I would like to see, and I'm, I will stay neutral on the ordinance. It's the first reading of the ordinance, because we have time before the second reading. Uh, and I would like to see county staff engage with the providers and the health plans on a meaningful discussion of what this means, what it looks like, and how we can all come together and engage around something that could be transformative in how we care for Medica patients in this community. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Rick, we appreciate your comments. Madam Clerk, are there any further um speakers?
No, we have no additional speakers.
Okay, we'll start for uh with some comments from CEO Steve Smith and followed by comments from Supervisor Baines, who has his hand raised as well.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. Um, just a few follow-up comments, um, because a few, a few of these topics were mentioned. The county has been doing due diligence for the past four years. It's not like this is something that came along. Um, we have notes showing back to two thousand and eighteen where we invited uh providers to meetings where they didn't respond to invitations or didn't show up. Um, I don't know the reasons for that, but we have proof of that. And I forwarded it to your board in the past, uh, where we've tried to engage. Staff have no financial interest in this whatsoever. Um, we only have the interest in improving patient care. The uh going the RFP route means, yes, it will be competitively bid. And right now, the county will have no idea who we would get. So we don't know if we would get Anthem or anyone else. Um, and when we have the choice to go with partnership, which we can see uh those around us going, and we would not be going this direction if they didn't have very positive results, including, I know, uh, two CAOs. One who, one is a former CAO who works for this county now, who had an outstanding relationship with partnership in their county. And another CAO, neighboring CAO, who was in a partnership uh county previously as CAO, saying they loved partnership and what they did for the community and the engagement. Um, I I I take, I weigh that heavily. Uh, we have endorsement from Senator Nielsen and Assemblyman Gallagher. But also, um, the model that is being discussed in other, mentioned in other rural counties, and I believe it's um Imperial that they may be referencing, we have asked that question to DHCS, I believe it was, DHCS. Um, yes, Dr. Lou's nodding affirmatively. We have asked that exact question to them, is this option viable for us? And they have told us in writing, which I afforded to the board, no, it is not. You can do the RFP or you can go with partnership. Um, so if that were something that we were looking at, after, I would suggest that after the audit in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen results came out, um, if at that time, um, we had been engaged by the organizations that, per the audit, and I don't mean to slam anyone, but that were um showing that care um was difficult to come by at the least and had many areas improvements to make, well, then we would have had a couple of years to consider that model. But that model wasn't suggested to us until about, I don't know, within the last few weeks. If it's been earlier than that, then Dr. Lou or or Nancy O'Hara could um correct me on that. So um anyways, I just wanted to make those points, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, CEO Smith. Uh, Supervisor Baines, you had some comments? Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I guess um I do have some um some questions for you all here. Okay, well, I guess it starts off with, um, I guess, um, our CEO, uh, Smith had just mentioned that they have been engaged. I mean, that was my first question is is, um, you know, why haven't? Why haven't the providers been engaged in these discussions? And, um, you know, why no competitive bid? Or why we haven't gone up to the competitive bid? I'd like to know a little bit more about the um, the CalAIM relationship. And um partnership mentioning that they can increase providers. That I'd like to know how.
So if I may, Supervisor Baines, through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Um, the CalAIM is a state-mandated initiative. It is a requirement for all Medica managed care. Doesn't matter if it's Anthem, California Health and Wellness, or Partnership. The benefits is gonna stay the same because it's a state mandate for all Medica managed care health plans to have it. So when you say, oh, we'll provide medically tailored meals, we'll provide housing stability, connection to housing for homeless clients, that's all from the state. It is not variability from uh plan to plan. We actually have an FAQ that was just sent to us um to kind of walk you through CalAIM. Um, and so we'll share that that with you very shortly. Uh, sorry if we've been busy with Delta variant. Um, but so that's the one clarification. The reason why we say that it can. one clarification. The reason why we say that it can increase access is that once you join partnership health plan, you don't just join for yourself. In Sutter County, you actually join the current 14 counties that's already in partnership. So partnership started in 1994, Solano County, went to Napa, went to Yolo, went to Marin, Menesino, and then 2013, they actually expanded to eight rural frontier counties, including Trinity, Shasta, and several others. And what CEO Smith is referencing is several of those rural frontier counties are very, very happy with partnership. And when we talk to our colleagues in those counties, they have nothing but good compliments and just deep appreciation for the collaboration with partnership. So when we talk about access, that means that, you know, Yolo County, it hosts UC Davis. So Sutter County's residents who are Medi-Cal beneficiaries, if the ordinance is passed and we join partnership health plan, we can be referred, all of our patients down to Yolo County providers, and they have a lot, right? And then now, instead of just looking at sort of the North State region in terms of medical providers, we can look westward, towards the Bay Area, towards Napa, Menesino, Solano. And as you look at the, what we call the penetrance of specialty providers in those counties, they're a lot higher. So that's what we're saying when we say partnership health plan can provide increased access.
Go ahead, Supervisor Baines. Do you have some follow-up questions?
You know, we're hearing about all the positive results based on their current size, but what guarantees are there built in with the model with all this rapid expansion, right? And then in addition to that, if we're not happy, is there a way to get out of the agreement or the partnership? Or where do we go if we're not satisfied?
So, through the chair, I'll try to answer to, so Supervisor Baines, in terms of partnership deliverance, before they even consider any expansion, like Nancy has relayed, they're very careful and they're very deliberate. So when we went to them in 2018, all 18 counties, they said, we will get back to you. We're gonna do a very robust, full internal financial analysis, and we'll get back to you, 18 counties. And when they got back to the 18 counties, they actually said, based on our very detailed internal financial analysis, we can only actually agree to consider 10 out of the 18 counties. Sutter County fortunately is within one of the 10 counties. On top of that, the State Medi-Cal Managed Care Agency, overall agency, Department of Healthcare Services, they also require a partnership health plan to provide a very robust financial analysis and sort of a financial plan for the expansion to hopefully all 10 counties that's in consideration right now. So there's multiple layers of due diligence in terms of financial aspect for the expansion. So that's where I think that I'm very confident in their careful approach partnership is.
Okay, Supervisor Conant, questions?
Then demute. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair Flores. I think that this is a good plan. I thought is, why don't we move it forward today, and the county would have to let the ordinance stand and revisit it on the 14. And in that time, we could have staff do one more look at it with those other agencies that want to participate and go from there.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Ziegemeyer, yes?
You know, I'm, once again, you start talking about like down south, sending people access to different specialists down south. And I just don't see how there's whatsoever any control. I know they're talking about putting a committee together, but Dr. Lou says, well, they can provide, they can do this and that. Seems like they're selling us pretty hard on this with really not much local input, and it just, they're selling this pretty hard, and I just don't like the fact that we don't have as much local input, and especially with our local medical professions, professionals in this area, part of that.
Okay, Supervisor Ziegemeyer, thank you for your comments. CEO Steve Smith, I see you have your hand raised. Do you have some comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to clarify, the only option right now that includes local control is partnership health, because we would have local control. If we go to RFP, the hybrid model that's been described, as I stated, DHCS said that is not viable for us. So it's one or the other. We go to local control with partnership, which whoever was saying about guarantees, you're right, there's no guarantee that this will be perfect. We only have other counties' experiences and our review and due diligence to say that this is the best option for the county. But we believe that it is. And again, it's the only option with local control. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, CEO Smith. Any further comments from the board? Robin, did you have a comment?
Well, I did. Just, just to remind you, the document in front of you is that you are joining as commissioners, the partnership commission, and it means that, that members of you will participate in the governance. And as, when they say there's local participation, that's members of this board or appointees. And as expanded services are contracted by the partnership, they're done with your oversight and selection of local providers. So, and the question was asked about termination. Upon 90 days, you can exit this, this commission. But it is one of those things that you are statutorily required to provide this care to the, to the Medi-Cal recipients. And so you've seen that it's been four years to get to this point, and so 90 days would be a short amount of time to go through the lengthy process to do something different. But there, there is that option. I wanted you to not think that once you were bound, that you were impossible to be unbound.
Thank you for that clarification, Robin. So it's interesting to note that we will be, would there be two members of this board sitting on that commission or one? Sorry, you're muted.
I'm looking at the, I believe it's membership of the commission. It's based upon, it's based upon a formula.
Okay.
So through the chair, if I may, it depends on how many of the 10 counties we join. So currently, partnership has 14 counties, and so it depends on, out of the 10 counties, considering the transition, how many would successfully pass to add on to the 14 counties. And like Robin said, it's based on a formula, depending on the population of Medi-Cal beneficiaries. I also want to stress that we actually have been functioning as the leader of the 10 counties considering the transition, in the sense that we know that there is strength in numbers. So when we meet every two weeks to share notes and discuss, then we can come as collective regional voice for the North State region to partnership. So we are talking and collaborating with them as equals, and not just having them come to us and say, this is what we're gonna do. No, the conversation has always been collaborative and a discussion as one collective regional voice. And we are the sort of organizers and centralized process for that.
Okay. So I just have a, I guess, clarifying question. So we've done a lot of agreements, and, you know, I remember being in the, you know, the discussion with our garbage company even, and going through all different types of contracts the last several years. One of the things that seems to come back and haunt us quite a bit, and Supervisor Baines mentioned this a little bit, but, you know, the thought of performance measures, what are the guarantees? So instead of saying guarantees, you know, I would like to know, like, what are the performance measures? And maybe those are set in the contract, and I just haven't read the language. So how can we make a set of performance measures very clear that if we're not reaching these benchmarks, we can improve upon what's going on or somehow, you know, change the contract? And I'd just like to, I guess, need to understand that better, and maybe we need to, you know, pass this first reading tonight, and then we can get clarification for the next round. But that is really critical to me because if there's any, like, mistakes, I could say that we've made over the last several years, it's not putting in strong enough benchmarks and not having a easy, easy is a hard word, but an exit strategy for underperforming contractors. So it's almost like these, you know, contractors, even when they're, when they're building, and then they come back and they do change orders on us that are surprised, and that's another change order, another change order, you know, and in this case, human lives are at stake. So it's really critical how those performance measures are met, and what they are, and what kind of benchmarks we look at. So I don't know if you can address that a little now. I think, you know, we have to really look at this for the first reading so we can move it forward, and then talk further for clarification. But if you can give me some comfort around the benchmarks and performance measures, I'd feel better about it tonight.
Pardon me, Chair Flores. I'll try to take a stab first at answering it. There are robust performance metrics. It's actually set with the Department of Healthcare Services, right? DHCS for all Medi-Cal managed care plans. It is actually a publicly available dashboard. And if you go on it, you will see overwhelmingly that partnership outperforms our two current commercial health plans. So that is something that can be readily accessible, and we're happy to share that information with you all. And that is an ongoing set of performance metrics that throughout the state through DHCS, they utilize to measure any Medi-Cal managed care.
Okay, I just, you know, maybe you don't have the answer tonight, and that's okay, but I, I want to make sure that those performance measures and those benchmarks are localized. So I know you're saying, you know, we have this out, this other set of performance measures, but maybe we have something else that we want to add, you know, based on your feedback, Dr. Lou, or, you know, other providers in the area. But I'd like to just have a good, clear understanding what those performance measures are before we go to the final passage of this.
Sure. And that, that is requiring an ongoing discussion, which will continue to happen if the ordinance is passed for the next 2.5 years, because the transition does not actually occur if passed until January 1, 2024. So we have the opportunity to speak not only maybe on behalf of Sutter, but a collective voice with other counties to discuss that with partnership. And in terms of localized performance metrics, within each region, those performance metrics are listed. So it's not just for, like, the entire state of California, or it's not just for all, you know, 20 or so counties within partnership.
Okay, great. Thanks for the clarification. I will tell you that I would, I will support this tonight, but if those benchmarks aren't clear to me for the second reading, I will not support it. So I just want to make sure we have a really clear understanding of that going forward. Okay? And then with that, I'd like to, go ahead Supervisor Baines first, and then Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Thank you, Chairman Flores. I was just gonna concur with the comments that you just made. And I think by looking at staff's recommendation, this is to continue the item to September 14th meeting for the actual adoption itself. So Supervisor Ziegemeyer, if you have a comment or a question, you could go ahead with it. If I was just gonna make a recommendation, but-
Yeah.
Move forward to staff's recommendation.
Okay, go ahead Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
My comment is, from all the stakeholders in this from both sides, I, in all of us, I'm assuming, I've read through the staff report and everything, but I just want to see it in layman terms. I want to see the guarantees from their side and the guarantees from the other side. Because with all due respect, we run Sutter County. We don't run Yuba County, Colusa County, Shasta County. So whatever they do, that's fine with them over there. All I care about are the people of Sutter County right now, and what's the best for the people of Sutter County's health. So if you're gonna pitch us something and say, hey, this right here is the best for Sutter County's health, and the other side comes through with their points, strong talking points, and said, hey, these are facts. This is, this is gonna benefit the health of Sutter County better. That's all I'm asking for.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer, would you like to second the motion with that?
Yes, I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a first by Supervisor Baines, and a second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye. Can I make one comment? And I would, I would like to make emphasis to the staff that not only do we have the performance measures, but we reach out one more time to the, the other people that spoke today to see if we can't resolve some of these issues.
Okay, I think that's important, and hopefully staff noted, and make sure we can do that. Okay, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you all for the work done on this project so far. And I think it's pretty clear that you have an understanding from the board. We want to get some clarifications, making sure we have not necessarily guarantees, but at least benchmarks on, and also, you know, what a clear exit is if we had to, or what changes, how we make those changes. Okay? Again, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Chair. Read the title of the ordinance.
Yes, if you could please read the title of the ordinance, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending the Sutter County Ordinance Code by adding Chapter 89 pertaining to the partnership health plan of California Commission.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we'll now move on to item number 21. CEO Steve Smith.
Thank you, Chair Flores. So this is, the recommended, recommended action is that the board approve an updated set of countywide top priorities and reaffirm the countywide goals and board norms. On May 4 of this year, the board conducted a study session to review the top priorities, and the goals and norms were not specifically addressed at this meeting. After that, the county department heads met on June 7 to discuss the priorities, and their input is included in the updated top six priorities for 2021, 22. The most noteworthy change to the top priorities is the addition of a separate priority for public safety to address concerns regarding county-provided fire services and the deletion of the budget and finance priorities since all of its objectives from 2021 were achieved. So I have a slideshow. Let me try to share my screen.
It's the button in the middle.
Okay. Can you see the PowerPoint now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, as I mentioned, I'll go through each, and please feel free to have some discussion on these items, or if you want-
Hey, through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Dan, would it be possible, and I know we should have brought this up, but I'd rather have this, I mean, Steve, with all due respect, I know you worked so hard on this, but I'd rather do this report out in the open, you know what I mean, in the chambers? I mean, it, like I said, I mean, I respect that you worked so hard on this, and, but it's up to the board.
Through the chair, I actually would agree with you, Mike. I think having more people there in the public, being able to show them that, since I, I'm sure there's probably not too many people tuned in at this one. I mean, I'd like to see it, absolutely, but I think it'd be good for everybody to see it. I agree.
No, I'm happy to delay it. I just didn't want to keep delaying it on my account.
No, Steve, you did-
No, I think, yeah, I want people to be able to see-
Excellent job.
Yeah. Okay, Supervisor Baines or Conant, you guys okay with delaying this, or, I don't know if we want to hold off on a whole other meeting, or we want to-
I really wanted to finish it up today, but I guess I'll go along with the rest of the board.
Supervisor Conant?
I don't mind waiting. I would like to share this with the public more, and I'm afraid that we probably, this hour, lost a lot of the public. Maybe not.
Lost all of them, I think, but, yeah. We lost most of them, for sure, yeah. Do you want, do you guys think this warrants another study session instead, or a separate meeting of the board just for the priorities?
I think so.
You guys good with that? Supervisor-
I am.
Conant?
I wouldn't mind if you did it earlier in the meeting, but, you know, don't wait till the amen's here.
Well, maybe, maybe we could just have an hour special meeting on priorities. What do you- What do you think about that, CAO Smith?
Sure, I'm happy to do that and, uh, maybe we can set that up. The, the next board meeting isn't for three weeks, um, so I can set that up. And, and/or I can set it up in conjunction with, if you're wanting that resolution to come forward sooner than later, we could do those at the same time, as long as they're agendized at the same time.
Let's see if we can do it next week, you know? I know the, some of, some of these guys are in the middle of harvest, but let's figure out, you know, what we can do to work around their schedule, you know?
Sure.
We can get it. And let's just set an hour meeting, guys, where we can just go over priorities and talk about the resolution. Does that work?
Sounds good.
All right, so we're gonna, uh, table that to the special meeting. I know you put a lot of work into that, Steve, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, sure.
Makes sense, uh, given the, the volume of information we've been hit with today. So this will allow us to really focus on it.
Oh, sounds good.
Did you have any other comments you wanted to make, Steve, at this point?
Uh, no, I do not. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chair, can we please have a motion to table this, um, item to a, uh, special meeting?
Through the chair, with Conan, second, Baines.
First, uh, Supervisor Conan, second by Supervisor Baines. You can do a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, if you could start with Supervisor Conan and go the other direction, I'd appreciate it.
Of course. Supervisor Conan?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it and Supervisor Conan let us off that time, let the record reflect. So we know that you weren't last that one time, Supervisor Conan. Just wanted to make sure you're included. Okay, uh, let's move now to, uh, any follow-up reports or announcements by the supervisors? Or any condolences? And we'll start with Supervisor McKelley. Um, no, I have nothing at this time. Thank, okay, thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Conan?
Nothing.
Excuse me, Chair, sorry to interrupt. We do have one public comment from Christina. Um, I believe the last name is Hennege.
Okay, and what is the topic?
The house Lee stop signs, please.
Hi Christina. Okay, okay.
It's a problem child.
Okay, go ahead.
They were adopted earlier.
Okay, oh, is she done? Okay, okay, thanks for the comment. Uh, let's move now, again, let's see Supervisor Conan, you had none. Supervisor Baines, did you have any comments?
No comments. This time.
Okay, Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yeah, um, I'd like to close memory of Michael Nix, who passed away this past week. Mike was an amazing, uh, he's a basically a father figure to so many in Sutter. Guy was always there to help everyone out with, whether it be working on their house, working on their vehicle, taking them out fishing, great guy. And, um, Rebecca Pelfree, who passed away this past weekend. And Clinton F. DeWitt, who passed away July, in July, longtime farmer. And Diane Bates, who passed away August 15th, did a lot in the community as well. And, uh, last but not least, Joe Moorhead Senior passed away yesterday morning. So anyone that knew Joe, uh, we wouldn't have our pool, we wouldn't have our facilities in Sutter if it wasn't for Joe Moorhead. Um, the, uh, his family, between all four boys have, him and his family have done so much, uh, for the high school, the resting room, the weight rooms, um, it, it just, the list goes on and on. They're always there helping out, donating, trucking a tray load of gravel to every worthwhile cause. And it all started with, with Joe. Joe was an amazing guy. Everyone that met him loved him. Um, he was, I mean, he, he was, he had every meeting and making sure that everything was just running smoothly with the hall in the community. Joe's going to be greatly, greatly missed, so very sad about that, and that's it for me.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Ziegemeyer, appreciate it. Um, I don't have any condolences at this time. I do want to mention that Kentucky Fried Chicken is way open for business. Uh, it's hard to get in there though, so Supervisor McKelley will have to get you a reservation or something.
I checked it out. The line moves pretty quick.
Oh, good. So you made it. All right.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, and then I also want to, uh, note that I caught Supervisor Conan in the heart of Sutter County, uh, walking around in front of one of our fine restaurants. And I wanted to say thank you from Supervisor Conan for, uh, coming to downtown Uva City and visiting us. So you're welcome, uh, anytime that you're, that you're feeling well, anyway.
We don't have many restaurants in my district.
So I wanted to mention that. And then also mention, we will have, be having, uh, new Starbucks opening up here within the next about 14 days, I'm told. So it'd be interesting to see that on, uh, Clark, on Clark and Highway 20. Okay, uh, any, I, I entertain a motion for.
So I'm moved.
Okay, we have a first, is our second. Okay, we have a second by Supervisor McKelley out loud and Supervisor Ziegemeyer on mute. Uh, so we will, um, uh, ask the clerk to do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conan?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. We'll carry that. We're going to adjourn this meeting. I found, actually, look at that, I found a gavel here in my desk, but we're gonna adjourn this meeting. And, uh, we're going to ask you guys to go into closed session. And only, only those of you invited to the closed session, please join us. You'll have an invite in your calendar and we'll see you there within two to three minutes. Okay?
Excuse me, Chair, before everyone logs in, may I please read the title of the closed session?
Oh, yes, please do.
Evaluation of Public Employee Position Title County Administrative Officer Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Subsection B, Subsection 1.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and we'll see everybody on the, on the other side. Thanks.
Recording stopped.
Madam Clerk, are you...
Nothing to report at this time. Thank you. Our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.